I'd like to call the meeting of the Township of Ocean Planning Board to order tonight. Could we have a roll call, please? Here.
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 Here. Here. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on July 25th, 2018. There is an emergency exit through the courtroom doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We have a no smoking policy in this room and no new cases will be started after 10:30 PM. No new testimony will be taken after 11:00 PM. In addition, the applicant will be limited to one hour of testimony. All meetings will be video and audiotaped and shown on the Township of Ocean's community cable channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off or if you need to make a call, please make your call outside the meeting room. I'd like to start with minutes for approval. So, July 23rd, 2018, regular meeting. Motion, anyone?
My motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Okay, again, minutes for approval. July's 23rd, July 23rd, 2018, closed session. Would somebody please make a motion?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 And lastly, a minutes for approval, August 27th, 2018, regular meeting minutes.
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the resolution memorialization for the Township of Ocean, Block 22, Lot 27, 280 Roosevelt Avenue, Oakhurst, which was a minor subdivision.
I'll offer.
I'll second. I'll offer.
I'll still second.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next, we have cases that have been carried to December 17th, 2018. First case will be Deal Development Corporation, Block 34, Lot 3.02, 807 Deal Road in Ocean. The second matter that will be carried till December 17th, 2018 is Brielle Avenue LLC, Block 184, Lots 1 through 4, 1304 through 1306 Brielle Avenue in Ocean. Lastly, the case of Norwood Avenue Holdings, Block 13, Lot 17.01, 232 Norwood Avenue, Oakhurst, has also been carried till December 17th of 2018. Currently, we have this case before us. It's called a carried case. Kim Singh Incorporated, Block 33, Lots 29, 1647 Highway 35, Ocean, New Jersey, Zone C3. Mr. Resnikoff.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. At this time, I call Dave Besh to the stand.
Yes, we certainly do. Thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Professionals, reports first?
Reports.
Reports first.
Chairman.
Reports first.
Yes. Jim, would you like to submit your report?
Yeah, I'll summarize it.
Okay.
Just first of all, this is a site, the old memory lane, Tropical Isle, and then Don Chucho's and then Posolipos have burned down a couple of years ago. It's a difficult site. It's got 100 feet of frontage on Route 35, which makes access from 35 very, very, I think, dangerous. And then it's got 200 feet of frontage on Talmage. It's got three street frontages on 35, Talmage, and Belmore Street. So, and it's undersized for the zone a little bit, so it's difficult. So there are a bunch of variances that are necessary. Nearly all of them deal with the fact that it's a very difficult site to develop, and in order to get something on it that's viable, it's necessary to have those variances. There is one variance that's not related to the size of the site, and that's the area of the facade signs. The ordinance permits 10% of the facade area to be signage, and this looks like it's about 17%, the best I could tell. I couldn't see any reason for that. If the applicant wants to present reasons for it, he's welcome to. But from my end of it, I just couldn't see any reason. I thought they should be tilted 10%. I kept it convinced. And the other thing is, there's no signage plan or signage package, which I think if the, if the board sees fit to approve the application, I think that should be a condition of approval. And the Environmental Commission had submitted a report that just came in today. They basically don't have any objection to the concept. They had some suggestions as to possible changes in plant materials, and I think if the board, again, is inclined to approve the application, I think they should, it should be a condition of approval that the applicant work with me and we advise the landscape plan accordingly. And just for the boards aware, the building is going to be a three bays of commercial space. It's a one-story building, just a little under 3,000 square feet.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a report dated November 17th. I'll also summarize. This applicant, as Jim mentioned, it's a tough site. This applicant and his professionals have worked with us over two years to put together something that was viable and feasible. And I think it's about as good as you can do on this site. Most of the variances have to do with parking stall, aisle, or park stall orientation, parking stall size, but, and setbacks, because, as Jim mentioned, the site only has 100 feet of depth. But all in all, I think it came out about as good as you can do on the site. So, I would recommend, I actually recommended that the board approve it, subject to getting the outside agency approvals and finalizing the documents for the board professionals.
All right, thank you.
Just one other comment that the board should be aware of is that the prior development of the site, there is no buffering between this site and the residential uses across Belmore Avenue, and they're providing a substantial buffer, about 25 feet. So that's a substantial improvement over the prior condition.
So, based on the variances that you put in today, that you kind of say, is there any that you kind of feel like are questionable, or you feel...
No. The only one is the sign, the sign area for the facade. Everything else just makes sense.
All right then. Mr. Resnikoff, would you like to proceed?
Yes, at this time, I call Dave Besh.
Okay, so how do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
I do. David Besh, B-O-E-S-C-H, 1750 Bloomsbury Avenue, Ocean, New Jersey, with Nelson Engineering Associates.
Mr. Besh, would you give the board a benefit of your background and qualifications?
Sure. I have a bachelor's degree from Rutgers University in environmental planning and design. I am a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey and in Pennsylvania. I was employed by what was then Nelson Gendarian Associates in 1984, where I've worked through its numerous restructurings for the past 34 years, where I have risen through the ranks from junior draftsman and print person.
You're missing qualifications here a lot.
What if we had an order to say we recognize you?
We do. I don't know if you wanted to go through this or not, but you can proceed. We'd be welcome. Thank you.
Every month.
I've never heard all your qualifications before, I don't think.
Yeah, I thought you should let him go.
I would offer him as an expert.
It's accepted.
Thank you.
We may want to just mark the two boards that I have. One being the Boundary and Topographic Survey dated...
I choked, February 13th of 17?
January 25th of 2017. Yes. As A1. And then I have a colored copy of the landscape plan, which is part of the overall site plan package. Original date of May 15th, 2017, latest revision date of October 25th, 2018. And it is Sheet 4 of 11 of the entire site plan package.
Sure. As A2? October 25th of 18. Mr. Besh, can you describe existing conditions at the site for the board?
So very quickly, because I'm sure all the board members are as familiar, if not more so than I am, with the subject property. The site is located at the intersection of Route 35, Talmage Avenue, and Belmore Street. Three frontages. It had contained a building that was used as a restaurant for decades. That building was over 3,700 square feet in size. That has since burned down. The balance of the eastern end of the site was unstructured asphalt that was used as the parking area in whatever configuration the patrons of the restaurant decided to use at that time. The overall impervious surface coverage was over 14,600 square feet, and there was unremarkable landscaping at best throughout the property with no buffers to the adjacent residential properties to the east or to the other properties, any direction. There was no buffer whatsoever. We are proposing a facility that reduces the building coverage by over 800 square feet. So we're going down from 3,768 square feet to 2,925 square feet. We are also reducing the impervious surface coverage by over 2,200 square feet. So from 14,623 down to 12,344. By providing a one-way circulation, I will provide structure to the circulation of parking that doesn't exist on the property today, while providing landscape buffering, although not totally in compliance with the ordinance requirements, substantially upgrading from what exists today, along with lighting package that is also an upgrade, and a signage package which makes the property more easily identifiable to see, approach, and enter. One of the variances that we're seeking relief for is the setback of the freestanding sign from Route 35, where 15 feet is required. We're providing 11 feet. But in order to bring it to the required 15 feet, would be required to push the entire envelope to the east, which would then reduce the buffer adjacent to the residential properties to the east. As Bill had mentioned, many of the variances are associated with the parking space configuration and aisle configuration, which we have worked out and we believe is the, the design as shown and as for the variance requested, is the best utilization of the property and the safest utilization of the property in its current configuration.
With respect to the variances, the specific variances that are laid out on your plans, did you want to just summarize those briefly for the record?
Okay. The property at 18,200 change square feet is just under the 20,000 square foot requirement of the zone. The property immediately to the south is developed, so there's no opportunity to gain additional property in that direction. And of course, street frontage is on all the other remaining sides. So that's a variance that will be unaffected. The front setback of the building, where the existing structure was located just over 3 feet from the right-of-way of the interchange of Talmage Avenue and Route 35, at 3.3 feet, we're pushing the building not only back from Route 35 to 73.6 feet to the building wall. The awnings, I believe, are at 70 feet. So that's what we requested the variance for, 70 feet to the awnings. But we're just under 12 feet setback to Talmage Avenue. But again, an increase from the 3 feet that was there before. The ordinance requires that curb cuts be located in the center-third of the property. However, in order to provide the one-way circulation pattern, necessitated the location of the driveways outside of that third in order to get the circulation pattern onto the site. Mentioned the minimum front yard setback. Parking is required to be at least 25 feet away from the property lines. Again, the small nature of the property, we are requesting relief from all three of the roadway frontages. Otherwise, the ability to provide parking would be so diminished as to render the site unusable. The landscape islands at the end of the parking rows, again, we believe we're meeting the intent, if not the letter, of the ordinance in that regard. And the absence of a loading zone on eastern end of the site and the southeastern corner, we have provided for the dumpster enclosure to be located for easy access from the service vehicle. The size of these proposed tenants, you know, again, the space will be divided into three separate tenant spaces, so they'll be averaging roughly 1,000 square feet. These types of tenants are not going to be getting large deliveries, semi-trailers. You might get a box truck, but you're most likely going to get overnight carriers bringing the deliveries to the site. But if necessary, for short-term, short-term standing, that could either be, it would most likely occur in the rear eastern aisle with easy access to the doors at that location.
The size of the parking spaces, we were proposing 9 feet versus 10?
Correct. But we are providing hairpin striping to allow for greater compliance with the spacing of the vehicles within that nine foot.
Or the parking stall length, 17 feet also?
Yes, 7 feet in length at an 85-degree angle versus a 60-degree angle or 90-degree angle, which the ordinance identifies.
One of the things we worked out, because it's a variance, is the aisle width and the parking stall depth. The ordinance requires parking stall depth of 18 feet with a 24-foot aisle behind it. So you would have 18, 24, 18, which is 60. Because most cars today don't come near 18 feet in length, and because the site was so small, what we suggested, and because most people pull up and tap a wheel on the curb anyway, what we suggested for this was 17-foot-deep stalls with a 25-foot aisle. Therefore, the parking, the vehicles get to share the extra width in the aisle for backing purposes. They generally don't need it in terms of the length of the stall. So they have as much room to maneuver, but they're sharing it. And it just seemed to make sense on this site.
Some waivers that we're requesting is for the placement of sidewalk along the highway frontages, or actually roadway frontages. None existing on any of the three streets, so again, we're requesting waiver for that item. And that's, that's what I have for you this evening.
Now, you have had an opportunity to review Mr. Fitzgerald's letter dated November 17th, 2018?
Yes.
And have reviewed that with the applicant, and can you stipulate that the applicant can comply in all regards to that letter?
Yes, we do.
And with respect to the variances that you've noted and Mr. Higgins has noted, it's your opinion that those can be granted without detriment to the Township of Ocean ordinance?
Yes, I do.
At this point, I don't have any additional questions of Mr. Besh.
Any concern on the, because the retail space is, any concern about overflow of parking that now all of a sudden the side streets have to get overly crowded?
Well, he's got two more parking spaces than the ordinance requires. I don't, I mean, I'm not going to tell you to, no worries ever, you know what I'm saying? But for the most part, the ordinance is pretty...
Pretty clear.
Yeah, pretty good as to parking, and he's got more than is required.
And you've got the building just to the north of that across Talmage that has basically the same proportion of parking, and there's never a problem in that parking lot.
The sign, you're looking for a variance for the sign, right? Because it's four foot, you're shy four foot.
I go on the setback from the right-of-way of Route 35.
How big of an issue is that sign with regards to the...
Personally, he's got so little frontage that I kind of thought myself, and I'm just speaking from it, it made sense to have it where it's pretty visible, so that people see it and then...
We're talking four feet, right? I mean, would you, would you just move everything four feet down, or you're 25 feet on the back?
But that's the residential across the street.
I think it's better to have the 25-foot residential buffer than the sign.
So you feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable. It's a very attractive sign.
You just think it's because, you just think it's over utilizing? You said something about it's 17% versus 10%?
Yeah. No, that's, that's the facade signs on the building.
Or that's on the building?
Not the freestanding, yeah.
That's not the same thing?
The signs on the building are the ones with 17% of the area of the facade instead of 10%. That was as best I could tell by measuring, as I worked to mention.
And you're in compliance with changing that to 10%?
The, I'd ask for the architect to address the facade signs. Thank you.
And we're looking at three separate units, three retail units. Is that what we're looking at?
Yes.
At approximately 1,000 or so square feet.
That's correct.
And we have any kind of indication of the usage? I mean, what it's going to be? Do we know?
It could be one user and anything permitted in the zone. I mean, that's...
So it could be more, it could be one...
Yeah, I mean, if I was the board, I might consider restricting it to no more than three.
Yeah.
But there's no reason that he maybe not have one, just one user, single user. 20 feet is less than 3,000 square feet.
Yeah.
But it's also, it's also identified as a retail space, right?
It is. But I mean, anything in the zone with the same parking requirement would normally be allowed to occupy it. If he came in with a medical, which may not permit it in the zone, would had, you know, one and a half times or two times the parking depending on, then that would not be allowed to...
Yeah.
Will the architect present conceptual, so we could see what the building will look like?
Yes, he's prepared to do that.
Okay.
So, is it, so you were saying that if it became a clinic or something like that, or...
They'd have to go for variance.
Anything permitted in the zone that has the same parking requirement as this use would typically be permitted to get a new CO without, you know, if it needs to use a change.
It's five years down the road, and the tenant changes as long as the same parking requirement. The zoning officer regret that...
If it increases the parking requirement and couldn't be met, then they'd be here looking for variance or looking for a different tenant.
Chairman, back to the sign issue.
Yes.
Did you indicate that you did not receive a sign package?
Yeah, there's no...
I thought Dave indicated that there is a sign package.
There are some, there are some sketches of the signs, but there's not a package with colors and the details we like to see.
Can you comment on that, please?
Again, the, the, since the, even the freestanding sign is supposed to be designed to complement the building, I would ask Mr. Passman to address the detailing of all the signs, freestanding and building mounted.
So, the next witness is going to adjust the sign package somewhere along the line?
I think he's going to explain the package that he has developed, and then we'll go from there as to whether any adjustments are necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd call Donald Passman to the stand.
Well, before we do, I just want to note that I don't see any people from the general public out there that would like to make comments about Mr. Besh's testimony, so we're going to move on to the next witness.
Very good, Chairman.
I'm taking you over.
No revision date on A1. On A2, which you originally had, there's a revision date. I have a few copies. And I revised that on 10/23/18, which will show the sign areas. This is after I received a report, and I decided to be a little more clear on the sign areas. Today's testimony?
Nick, could you swear the witness in, please?
Sure. You swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and the whole truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
He needs to state his name for the record.
Yep.
I will state my name. Donald J. Passman with the firm of Passman and Reclay Architects.
I'd offer Mr. Passman as a expert in the field of architecture without the necessity of going through his credentials.
He's been here before, many times.
I'll accept. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't present it to you, that's why.
Oh, you never sent it in?
Nope, never sent it in.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, this was in light of the Mr. Higgins report. I realized that, I guess I didn't have any sign areas exactly on the drawing, and what I did is submitted floor plans, which one is in front of you on this board. It shows a general layout of what would be up to three tenants, each with a bathroom in the rear. The front would be mostly glass and doors. There's a half the glass on the Talmage side. Again, most, most retail or other tenants want to have as much glass as they can. The south side is more block, and the east side is mostly block with, you know, just entrance doors. Elevation-wise, and I have a rendering also, which you can see. But what I did is just turned to the revised one, but the plan is the same, or the elevations are the same. There's three signs on the Route 35 side, west side. They're all dimensioned as 2 by 16. They're like a box sign, or they could be individual letters or internally lit, and that's 32 square feet. The whole entire area of the building facade on that side is, where is it? 1,311 square feet. So this actually, the signs represent 7.5%. So I don't know. Jim, you didn't see the elevations, or you didn't have a calculation of the building area? Whatever, I'm here to clarify.
Okay.
Questions?
If that's what it is, that's what it is. That's fine.
So with that, there wouldn't be a necessity?
And then on the other side, yeah, right. On the west side, facing 35, we have less than 10%. On the north side, on Talmage side, it's even less because there's only one sign. One sign over the glass. All the signs are over the major glass areas, and that's 32 square feet again, and it's 3.5% of that facade. And then actually, we have another, we have another facade, another street frontage, which has no signs right now. It could have more, but they're just entrances, you know, or something like that. So, the rendering, try to do this...
If I understand, or 7.5 and 2.5 is 10%?
Yeah, but it's of the, each facade, is it not?
No, it's 10% total.
Of the total facade, but I got a whole nother facade. I didn't even count.
With signs on it?
No, no signs on it. So we have way under 10%.
Yeah.
No, it's just the facade on which the sign is located.
That's what I said, right. One 7.5 on one side, the other face, Talmage, is only 3.5% of its, of its own facade.
I'll try and understand. I'm confused.
If I take the area, if I take the area facing Route 35, divided by 32 times 3, I get 7.5%.
Okay, okay.
And if I take the one on Talmage, I get 3.5%.
Okay.
It's not a lot of signage.
No. Now, how are you measuring the signs?
Size of what?
The signs. How are you measuring?
Well, I'm measuring as an outside rectangle of where the sign would be.
Measuring the whole sign, the back of the sign, and not just the wording?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. As would be done. As would be done. And rendering-wise, ta-da. What we have is, you know, rendering from the Route thirty-five side, and the awnings give it a little bit of bright color. In this case, like a standing seam roof. I have brick piers that divide the thing into thirds. I've got different heights, two heights, and one in the middle, a little taller. You know, mostly kind of clear glass with a clear aluminum finish on the glazing, on the framing, and then maybe a large colored block on the bottom. And that block, the decorative block would wrap around the building. And then there's some stucco up above, and that would make it easier for this kind of treatment. But not a lot of stucco in this facade, a little more on the Talmadge side, and a little more on the, more block on the Belmont side, Belmore side, sorry.
Excuse me, the block that's on there, is that brick or is that going to be a stone?
This would be brick. The piers are brick, like standard-sized brick. The decorative block you'll see is eight inch by sixteen inch type block that most larger stores have. But the idea is there to have some durability down below. It's only two feet high, and mostly it's glass and brick piers. And the stucco is a background, just for backdrop for the aluminum, the standing seam roof canopies. Give you a little bit of coverage as you come in. They stick out four feet from the face of the wall. The brick sticks out four inches from the face of the wall.
What color will the sign wording be?
They could be, you know, again, that's going to be up to the tenant.
The brand?
Right.
Okay.
If it was Starbucks, it'd be green. I don't know. It's hard to control.
Starbucks would be an unfortunate one.
As I, as I drove here today, I'm guessing, everybody has individual letter signs today. It used to be plastic signs with some vinyl lettering. But most people are going with individual, you know, letters that make up their logo and their sign. And it does give it more visual interest. And usually, the landlord will say, keep them in the same style. Even though it has their own font for their own business. But I don't want to get too far.
But the colors are going to be consistent?
Well, I would hope so, yes.
No, we're not hoping so.
Oh.
We're doing so. What we're going to do is submit a sign package that's going to show the colors of the signs, the color of the background, and that it's consistent with the freestanding sign. We busted the property to your north.
Yes.
It took us three years to get them to get their sign package right.
Oh.
Okay, so we're not going to...
Well, and the sign package, is that, is that, not to interrupt, but I mean, is that, after you, I mean, this is basically the sign package. It's this size and shape, but until we have a tenant, it's hard to submit a sign, exact sign.
Well, the exact sign, but the colors you want.
Oh, the colors.
The wording in the background.
Okay, we can do that.
Just like if you look at your, the property to the immediate north.
Yes.
The background is sort of a burgundy, and the letters, I think, are white.
Yes.
You don't have to be the same exact as them, but there has to be consistency within your site.
So we know that we have this kind of tan backdrop of the stucco. And then what I have is this, you know, kind of gray surround, but that may not be, you're right. It could be that we get more specific. We haven't gotten that specific.
Well, that's, that's...
That we want to have, you know, whatever the name of the store is.
Yeah, that's right.
With an outline of a letter and then a white letter or something, or yellow or whatever it calls.
Whatever, yeah.
We'll figure that out. Okay, and then...
Consistency in the colors of the signs.
That's fine.
That looks very nice what you have there.
The site sign is of the same materials. There's a little bit of brick in the bottom, some block that complements, and then the signs would be set in between them.
I think...
And we just haven't gotten that far, but obviously, we know that they're going to be consistent. That was the intent on the drawing as a, in a simplistic sense. Here are these three signs, and here are the three signs on the site, and they're all meant to be in the same vein. We just haven't gotten to that point, and we will.
Okay.
And the awnings or canopies, whatever, however you want to call it, are going to be that color that you have in the...
Well, we like to be something like that. I mean, I selected a color that would be sort of middle-of-the-road, not bright, but like a muted blue.
You should submit a range of Pantone colors.
Well, we have samples from different manufacturers, and I would submit a sample from them because it's coming pre-painted, right? So it's going to be a color that we like, and it's sort of a, you know, not, it's like a royal blue. It's not bright blue. It's meant to be like, it's like a battleship blue.
Don, it's going to be part of the approval.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, we'll submit that.
Nobody's saying that you can't choose your colors, what's saying it's got to be part of the approval.
In terms of the location of the freestanding sign, if it were to be removed backward, it would interfere with the design of the roadway as...
Well, that's according to Dave, and I trust his judgment on location of the sign. We did talk about it, but it made sense to put it where it was.
Can you, can you show us where the freestanding sign is going to be on the overview?
Well, I don't have that. It's really on the site sign. I'll hold it if you just want to.
There's a small landscape island located in the central part of the western parking row. The freestanding sign is going to be in that landscape island.
Okay. In other words, so the freestanding sign is going to be east-west?
It's going to be perpendicular to the highway, yes.
How tall is the sign, the actual sign?
Says sixteen foot eight. So it's well under what it could be, but it's, it's something to say, you could walk underneath or mow underneath it. Still have the sign up high, so you still see it from a distance.
North, south, north, south.
It's north and south.
You mean, it should be, the sign is north, south, right?
No.
The sign is east, west.
Perpendicular to the highway.
Perpendicular, so you could read it.
Okay.
Traffic's north, south, west.
Yeah, well, you read it north, south.
You're going to north, south, when you read it. The letters, the letters read from west to east.
No, whatever, who cares about that?
Yep.
So that sign's okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
What was it allowed to be? Jim?
I don't know the height of the...
No taller than the building, I think.
The height can be like nineteen feet, I believe. The maximum is twenty-five, but it's the height of the building plus twenty percent, which I think comes out to nineteen,
right?
My memory serves me right.
Any other questions for this witness?
Yeah, yeah.
Electronic?
Condition of approval, yeah.
No condition of approval for electronic.
Okay, we'll spell it out when I get that down on the computer.
Mr. Resnikov here. Are you done with this witness?
I am done with this witness, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to, again, make note that there are no members of the public here to question this witness, and conversely, no members of the public to add any commentary to this particular motion for approval. So at this point, I guess, since the rest of the board here has no further questions, would anybody propose a positive resolution for this?
I'll propose a positive resolution.
Oh, well, okay. Well, just backtrack a minute. I think we should close the public meeting, so may I have a motion to close the public meeting? I'll offer.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Now, may I have a motion for a positive approval?
I'll make a motion for positive approval of that.
Can I?
But the approval must be conditional or contingent on submission of a signage package which is approved by both of our professionals in this particular case.
And also the letters, any outstanding items in neither of our letters. And one thing that we would like is the final set of plans to be signed off by the board. That submission we'd like also to be accompanied by PDF files, so that we can keep a permanent record of it without all the papers.
Okay, let that all be...
And also revisions to the landscape plan, subject to my approval, working with Dave Besch, going over the Environmental Commission's report. So I think they had some good points in the report.
Okay, so those should all be included in any resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So now, might we proceed for a motion for a positive approval?
I make a motion to approve, to approve this, to a positive approval.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Okay, congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck.